Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to tonight's special meeting of ANC 34G. The time now, 7:36, I almost said 1:36, 7:36, I'll call the meeting in order. And we'll start with Commissioner introductions. I'll call the commissioners going on my screen from left to right. Commissioner Sherman?
Yes, I am Bruce Sherman. I represent Single Member District 002. Welcome, everybody.
And I'm Commissioner Lisa Gore, also Commission Chair and Commissioner for 3G 01. Thanks for coming out tonight. Commissioner Grunwald?
Yes, good evening. Carol Grunwald, SMD 03.
Commissioner Goslin?
I'm Peter Goslin, District 6, largely the west side of Connecticut Avenue back to Friendship Heights.
Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, hi, I'm Liz Nagy and I'm SMD 07 and I'm also Secretary on the Commission. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Commissioner Finisi?
Hi, good evening. I'm Laura Finisi. I'm Single Member District 4, between Broad Branch and Utah near Lafayette Elementary.
And Commissioner Simmons?
Corinthius Simmons, District 5, and Trezey.
Okay, in terms of meeting procedures, we're completely virtual tonight. We do have probably an issue that's going to be very passionate for a lot of folks. So with this meeting, I would ask everyone to be respectful of everybody's views regardless of what those are. If you want to speak, just use the raise your hand function, which is down at the bottom of the, on the React screen. There's a little button that says raise your hand and that way the chair can recognize you. We are slated to go to about 9:00 PM. If we get wrapped up early, that'll be all the better. But those are the meeting procedures. Commissioners, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I move that the agenda is adopted as is. And with that, we'll get started right away and turning it over to Commissioner Sherman for discussion on the zoning case, the text and map amendments. And Commissioner Sherman, I think you also have control of the screen so you can raise your presentation. Bruce, you're on mute.
Bruce, you're on mute.
Still can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I just had to screen up. It was hard to find the button, my apologies. So I was, I was saying, talking to myself, that what we want to do tonight to get started is to reacquaint everyone with the basic elements of the, of the proposals from the Office of Zoning for the, for the rezoning of, Office of Planning, rather, for the rezoning of Upper Connecticut Avenue. So I have up on my screen, what you can see are two maps, the existing zones that have been in place for, for many years, and the, and the proposed new zones. There are two, three in total, but two basic zones. One, that is for the civic core where the Community Center Library property is located. And the other zone extends from Livingston Street all the way to Chevy Chase Circle. And that is obviously the larger of the two zones and encompasses all the businesses and other establishments along, along the corridor. So if I come down a bit and just acquaint everyone again with just the basics of the proposals from the Office of Planning. The, the zone that I just mentioned here, the big zone, the NMU-4/CC1, that zone allows for buildings that would be up to 70 feet tall. We have discussed this significantly during the course of Advisory Commission meetings. The, we get to the 70 feet total by, if you see in the building height, 50 feet plus five foot bonus for, providing for an 18-foot tall ground floor, and then 15 feet for penthouse mechanical space. That gets us to a total of 70 feet with maximum lot occupancy of 60% or 75% for inclusionary zoning plus. That's the basic thing, a 70-foot structure, 60% to 75% lot coverage for the avenue from Livingston to the circle. With respect to the civic core zone, that provides for up to 80-foot buildings with 60% lot coverage. So to make it very simple, it's 70 feet with 60 to 75% for the avenue, 80 feet with 60% lot coverage for the civic core property. And again, here are the maps. So that is just by way of reacquainting all of us with what the proposals are. Tonight's conversations are not about these particular elements per se. The larger conversation we'll be having tonight concerns how Case 2325, the zoning case, has been handled by the zoning commission with respect to its having been a rulemaking instead of contested case. And to start the evening, however, we wanted to have a bit more conversation that we just began on Monday night at our regular meeting. On Monday night, I, I mentioned and introduced the notion that with regard to the, the, the new zone on Connecticut Avenue minus the Community Center Library site, the building height of 70 feet was something that exceeded what many in our community have stated in terms of their preference for building height. And as many people know, our commission has passed several resolutions proposing alternative heights for 60 feet and then 65 feet, which in the course of the zoning commission's hearings, the Office of Planning has reacted to and, and rejected. And I raised this again for one simple reason, and that is that there is similarity in, between ANC proposals and proposals from the Office of Planning with respect to housing on the corridor. Meaning that the proposal that we provided, alternative proposal of even 60 feet instead of 70 feet, according to OP's own analysis, would result in no loss of housing, including affordable housing. And that being the case, we have pressed the issue to say, could we find a compromise? The result, however, would be reduced first floor space, first floor heights that would affect retail. However, given what we have also heard from some of our local merchants, who, several of whom are joining us tonight, regarding they see as potential problems with the zoning owing to larger format retail, potentially, that could result in higher rents and other issues that could create difficulties for them retaining their positions and retaining their businesses. So we wanted to be sensitive, further sensitive to the business owners and be able to hear more from them. So tonight, we do have joining us for the first part of the conversation, several members of the business community. And I would like, at this point, Lisa, to, to turn to them if we could briefly. And I can introduce them. In the first instance, I want to see if Robert Gordon is available. Yes, I see he's on. I'd like to call on Robert Gordon, who did testify before the zoning commission, to share some of his further thoughts with, with the community tonight. And I think we have two or three more speakers that we'll try to move through quickly. Robert, if you could join us and speak for, you know, just a couple of minutes, that would be great.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I am a partner in Little Beast. We're also completing negotiations on another restaurant in the neighborhood and our family has interests in Artzy Beast. So we're very engaged commercially in this neighborhood. I'm just gonna be wearing my hat from the perspective of business. Excuse me. I'm kind of in the middle of dinner, but I have several concerns. The first concern is that with the higher zoning, the landlords will be tempted to want to take advantage of that. It's only natural, it makes sense. If I were a landlord, I'd consider either redeveloping my property or selling it to a developer. But what happens for the commercial establishment is that going from what the buildings are now, 30 feet, typically with a, a business on the first floor and something else above it, they're gonna have to be removed. The, the buildings will not be able to be built on top of those spaces. They're gonna have to, the, the buildings will have to be raised if a landlord decides to take advantage of the higher zoning, which it pretty much is inevitable. I mean, sooner or later, a landlord will take advantage of that. That means that the, the mom and pop shops that are on the first floor are gonna disappear. They may get the opportunity to move back in after the development is done, but if, if you're out of a space for even a short time, your business is dead. And, you know, the, it's clear that it'll take years to redevelop any space from the time that the commercial establishment is notified. So we're gonna clearly lose a lot of commercial folks who are here now.
The second... Robert?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm getting some, some weird sounds.
It's when people are being admitted. I'm trying to figure out how to turn the chime off.
Oh, I see, okay. I thought you were turning me off. So that's, that's one problem. We'll be out of business if our landlord decides to, to redevelop it. Excuse me. The second thing is that it's clear to me that once the redevelopment takes place, rents will go up. Big, big stores, maybe national stores will be able to come in and they'll be able to pay more per square feet. Now, it, it's not that this is an inexpensive area to rent commercially. It's, it's quite expensive and it's comparable to downtown. But it's still kind of, small business can, can still afford it. If the rents are raised, and it's all speculative, but if the rents are raised, it's gonna force small businesses out. And finally, I did testify before the zoning commission. The Commissioner Hood took a real interest in what I had to say about the, the problems surrounding businesses and local businesses, mom and pop type organizations like our family businesses in the neighborhood. So, you know, I, I think that that was one of the, the places where Commissioner Hood actually seemed to be, you know, truly engaged and thinking about the concerns of some of the, the current neighbors. So pretty much that's all I have to say. If there are some questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, thank you, Robert. I think in the interest of time, what we're going to want to do is proceed to call on other merchants on Connecticut Avenue who've joined us tonight to get them in. And let me go next, if, if we could, to Andy and Gene Gross of Monarch Paint. I see that you're on. If you would like to join us as well and take, just if you could, two to three minutes to express your views as on the matter. If you can activate your video, Gene, that would be great. There you are, and you're muted, Gene.
You're muted.
Do you have me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
I'm Gene Gross, co-owner, along with my brother, Monarch Paint and Design Centers. It's disheartening for me to think that what I've worked for, for 24 years will be taken away from me. 10 years ago, I put my life savings on the line to buy the business that I've worked in since 2000. 10 years ago, my brother and I invested in Monarch Paint. We are now just finishing paying off our loans in April of this year. And now I hear this can all be taken away. It doesn't seem very fair, and especially considering that it is being voted on without allowing a contested hearing so that we, a small business, unlike Robert Gordon, I have not been contacted. I would have testified to this. I, I have not been contacted by the OP or the deputy mayor. So I, I feel unfortunate in that. It's very emotional, I'm sorry.
No, we understand that, that, Gene. Would, would Andy like also to offer any comments? You're a bit garbled, Andy, but please go ahead.
I follow that. Is that a little bit better?
It's a little bit better. Please, just go, go ahead and we'll see if we can hear you.
Yeah, I think my brother articulated it pretty clearly. I mean, you know, we found out about this today, so it was a pretty big bombshell on us. And it, the, the whole upzoning thing, I, I mean, I understand, you know, the district needs to grow and I understand the premise is quote unquote affordable housing. But that's just a lot of times a REIT's roundabout way, you know, to get developments and, and, and to get the posse of landowners to say our property's worth a million now. Well, if, if we get upzoning, we know we're gonna get paid two to three million. And there's a lot of activity that goes on by these developers in that regard in these REITs. So it's just like, the small businesses just continue to get squeezed out in DC. And, you know, it, it's just, it's really a shame. I mean, I mean, I, I mean, you know, I look at like, like Goslin, who says, I know what's precious about small. I hope to help the community manage change in ways that protect what's precious. How does this protect the precious small? I mean, you know, you got the Avalon Theater right next to us, historical landmarks. I, I mean, and Commissioner Simmons, you, you have a small business tax preparation company. This wipes out small businesses. When it's developed, it comes in and only the big boxes can play. Anyway, like Gene said, it's pretty emotional. Thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your comments. And again, in the interest of time, we're gonna move on to bring in a few others who are here with us. Ki Yun, who is of McGruders.
I'd like to say something in response to Andy. Thank you. He raised my name.
Please.
Andy, I, I understand the, this concern and you'll see that I'm now busy trying to avoid the spillover effect of, of, from the notion of putting in a 20,000-square-foot liquor store in Friendship Heights on, on McGruders. One of the problems we're gonna have is this, that if there's any change along the avenue, that we're gonna need, I think we're gonna need some change along the avenue to, to answer all the competition that's occurring at Friendship Heights, at Tenley Town, out at this new place, Chevy Chase Lakes, out Connecticut. But I do understand that protecting our local businesses is something that's gonna be both very difficult and something necessary to do. In an ideal world, there'd be the same thing there is for, for protecting tenants in apartment buildings when the apartment building changes over. We don't have it now. We're gonna try to get it, but it's a, the change is difficult. But I, I think this notion that no change is the solution is the wrong one.
Thanks, thanks, Peter. Let's again go ahead and move on. Mr. Yun, if you don't mind joining us, if you unmute yourself, please, go ahead.
Can you hear, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. First of all, thank you for the opportunity. I'll try to keep it short. I, I definitely mirror Mr. Gordon's comments here. I've been in this neighborhood for 13 years now. And my family, my sister's family, our livelihood is the store. And to hear that a redevelopment would likely be triggered by this zoning change, which would allow, which will force us to move out, I just don't see us coming back. Even if a lease was offered to us with a new building, it would be two years later. What would I do with all the staff? There's over 40 people working here. I mean, I, I would have to lay all of them off and I can't ask them to stay for two years it takes to build a building to bring back in. And I'm not sure if it's economically viable, if I have to contend with other competition that, that Commissioner Goslin has mentioned earlier. So it's, it's really disheartening. I really don't know what to do. It seems to be nothing but bad news these days. But yeah, I mean, if, if zoning change is allowed so that a bigger building will be built, then a bigger building would be built. I mean, that seems pretty logical to me. So that's all I have to say.
Yes, well, thank you very much for, for your comments. And, and finally, I, I want to go to Rachel Maury, who is Main Street Manager in Chevy Chase for District Bridges. Rachel and I had a chance to chat earlier today as she has a, kind of a comprehensive view of businesses, obviously, on the corridor. And I wanted her to come and reflect on what she has heard from the people that she speaks to. Rachel, please go ahead.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rachel Maury and I work for the Chevy Chase Main Street. I was able to talk to Commissioner Sherman earlier today about just some of the feedback I've gotten from businesses over the course of the last year that I've been in this role. I am in the corridor Wednesday through Friday of every week, popping in, talking to the business owners as much as I can, dropping off flyers and giving them information about our events, but also asking them if they're attending ANC meetings, if they've heard anything about what's going on as far as zoning, what's going on with some redevelopment, mostly serving as a source of information for our small business community. And a lot of what I get is, I had no idea that was happening. That is the majority of the response that I get from people. There are several people from our business community that are, you know, really interested in redevelopment, excited to see what could happen, just excited about the idea of some sort of reinvigoration of the corridor. And as some of the other business owners have mentioned, a lot of people are incredibly worried about what's going to happen if things change, how they're gonna stay competitive, how they're going to, you know, figure out the fate of their business. I've worked with small businesses for a while and a lot of small business owners operate in the now. They're constantly worried about, you know, how they're going to, you know, stay competitive corridor over corridor, how they're going to, you know, operate in the next season. So a lot of them aren't looking at the, you know, the bigger picture. They don't have time to. And being able to be involved in these conversations is really hard for a lot of small business owners because running a small business is, you know, as a lot of the business owners here can attest to, a 24/7 job. So I think the fact that a lot of them aren't involved in this process and haven't had the opportunity to engage with it says a lot. And then also, somebody mentioned in the chat that there's a really great feature for seeing who owns a lot of the properties along Connecticut Avenue. And that's another point of confusion that I've talked to some business owners about is they don't own their buildings. They lease and a lot of them do have long-term leases, but a lot of them feel disengaged from a lot of the processes that happen around the corridor because they might not live in Chevy Chase and they don't own their building. So they don't feel like they have the opportunity to speak to some of the things that are happening as well. So that's just a little bit of, from my perspective, working on Main Street.
Great, Rachel. Thank you very much for that. I really appreciate it. And I know Commissioner Gore, we're right at the time allotment for this first session. We could take questions from commissioners, but I know there's a lot more that we need to get to. The one thing that I would say by way of creating a little connective tissue between this segment and the one that's going to follow is to ask the question if these perspectives from the business owners from Main Street, Rachel's own, own perspective as the Main Street manager, and then even the property owners on Connecticut Avenue have been fully factored into the decision-making, the review process that the zoning commission has undertaken. And what that leads us to think about in terms of the process that has, that has unfolded at the zoning commission. And with that, I'll put a period on this, Commissioner Gore, and turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Sherman. So we'll get into our next phase of discussion and that is what Commissioner Sherman kind of mentioned in the beginning, how the zoning commission is right now setting down the case, the zoning case, as a rulemaking case versus a contested case. So at our previous meeting, the commission voted in favor of having this special meeting to specifically discuss that. So that is gonna be the next phase of this discussion, the difference between the two. We also have, and I don't believe we have it on our website yet, because we just got it in, a proposed resolution from Commissioner Nagy regarding, you know, demanding that this case be set down as contested. I offered her some friendly amendments and there might be some other friendly amendments from, friendly amendments from the commission that are floating around. So after we have the initial discussion, and I also invited the Office of Attorney General. We are very fairly new commission. We have four new commissioners and I know some of the new commissioners have really been following this. Some of our new commissioners might not be as well-versed in it as, as well as returning commissioners. So I've asked the Office of Attorney General, and we have Max Tandro and Alexandra Kane with us, to just give us an overview of the two types of cases, rulemaking and contested, just the straight facts. So that, you know, commissioners can have a chance to ask them about the differences in the case as well as the community as well. And from there, what I would like to do is then have Commissioner Nagy introduce her resolution to the community. And she can discuss my friendly amendments, or I will discuss my friendly amendments, and then have discussion amongst the community and commissioners. And since we have a resolution on the floor, and Commissioner Nagy, I would ask that when you introduce the resolution, that you move it immediately so that the resolution is on the floor as a motion, then we'll have discussion and vote. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Maximilian, Max Tandro and Alexandra to just kind of give the commission and the community an overview of the two types of cases. And we can have, you know, if community members have questions for OAG, you know, we'll obviously let you guys ask questions just to make sure that we're all on the same page and we kind of understand what's going on here. Max?
Yes, good evening to everybody. Thank you very much, members of the ANC for inviting me, as well as Alex, to present. I'm just gonna give a brief overview in, in light of what Commissioner, Chair Gore had asked for us to do. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have to the extent that I can. I, I will first say that I, I completely understand that this is a, it's sometimes emotional and a, and a, and a very serious issue for everybody. I want to be very clear about that, that I recognize that and, and respect that there are differences of opinion. I will also just note, just to be completely clear, that I myself testified on behalf of the Attorney General in support of this case before the zoning commission. So I just want to be clear where I, where I have stood, where my office has stood. At that same time, I have taken the invite of Chair Gore to try to, apart from our specific position, to just simply try to lay out what I understand the, the rules are that are relevant here. So I just want to be clear about that first. The, in terms of the issue of a rulemaking or a contested case, this is a sort of a, an aspect of the zoning commission, which is a little funky, for lack of a better word. We're used to the We're used to the idea that there is a legislature and that does certain things, and then there's your judiciary that does other things, council does one thing, the courts do something different. The zoning commission, however, combines those two roles, those two capacities. Uh, and so as a result, it has to decide, uh, and the zoning commission is the one who's specifically charged with that authority to make that determination as to whether in a particular case that is before, at a particular request, whether it is putting on its hat as a legislature and making a public policy decision, or whether instead it is acting as a judge and deciding how the law applies to a specific case. As often happens, this is easier understood in the extremes and the middle where it's a little compute, where there's um, it's not as clear, that, that's where it, it's a bit of a gray zone. So one can understand if it is, let's say, uh, the application for a a special exception, some kind of aspect of the zoning regulations that would apply to a specific property, only to that property, would not affect any other property, at least directly, um, that that would be a contested case. We're not going to change the rules. We're going to say, do the rules, how do the rules apply to that specific property within the standards of what the zoning regulations allow? That would be clearly a contested case. The property owner, as well as the neighbors around, have rights, and therefore they can argue before the zoning commission that context is trying to make a decision on the merits, considering and acting basically as a court or as a judge. That's the adjudicative and therefore capacity, and therefore the contested case. Alternatively, you have a situation where it's changing the rules. Um, and let's say it's a situation where we want to uh change the parking requirements um for the entire district. It's going to cover everything in the district. It's going to reestablish instead of one for every four, it's going to be one for every five or one for every three units, and that's going to apply district-wide. I think we could all agree that that seems to be clearly a matter of public policy. It's going to affect the district as a, as a whole. And that would be the zoning commission then acting as its led, in its legislative capacity. And therefore, that's what we would call a rulemaking. And so those are sort of the two extremes. The difficulty is often happens is when you have something that is in the middle, right? Potentially where, because obviously we can imagine circumstances, even for example, this case, where folks can disagree, reasonably could disagree as to whether it is on, whether it should properly fall under a rulemaking or under a contested case, whether the zoning commission is acting in its legislative capacity determining public policy, or alternatively applying the rules in order to make a judgment that would affect specific property owners' interests. So let me back off briefly on that, just to talk about the specific differences between them. It is in the D C code, there is a nominal distinction made between uh what a rulemaking is and what a contested case is. That is D C code two dash five oh two and either definition seven, which is rulemaking, or definition eight, which is contested case. Honestly, doesn't really get much beyond what I've just said. You could all look at that as, as, as you want. What is more, I think, helpful is instead what is in the zoning regulations themselves. And the zoning regulations that those are described, the differences are described in subtitle Z for the zoning commission. And it's two oh one point five, which is defines rulemaking, two oh one point two defines contested case. But I will emphasize that two oh one point nine makes it very clear that wherever there is a potential confusion or not clear which category applies, it is the zoning commission's charge and authority to make that determination. And in the most recent case where this came up before the Court of Appeals, where there was an appeal of a decision by the zoning commission for a rezoning of a single property um that was classified as a rulemaking, the opponents of it took it to the Court of Appeals, said it should have been a contested case because it only applied to one specific property. In that case, the Court of Appeals said, actually, no, the zoning commission had the authority and they demonstrated that they had acted as if this was a rulemaking, uh and therefore we are content to leave it as a rulemaking. Um, that particular court case, for those who are interested, is PAL DC Storage um LLC versus uh the District Columbia Zoning Commission. Uh, and just the specific uh references, two two nine A third, one four eight, for those who are wondering if people have further questions, I'm happy to provide those citations for people uh through the ANC or whatever. Um, just to lay, again, get back to that fundamental distinction between a rulemaking and a contested case. So the zoning regulations define a rulemaking case as quote legislation, something that is legislative in nature and that presents issues for resolution at a public hearing. And I think this is the key phrase, that potentially affect large numbers of persons or property or the public in general. In contrast, the zoning commission, the zoning regulations define a contested case, right, as something that is quote adjudicatory in nature, that presents issues for resolution at a public hearing that are potentially a, and this is the key, limited scope of impact. And that involve primarily questions of fact applicable to that limited scope of impact, while broader issues of public policy are secondary concern. Right? So I think that echoes those, those, again, those are the two references in the zoning regulations, again, subtitle Z two oh one point five defining the um rulemaking, two oh one point two that defines a contested case, right? Again, legislative versus adjudicative are the sort of two fundamental ways of describing the differences. What does it actually mean in terms of when it gets down to brass tacks? Well, a rulemaking, since it's legislative, there is no, there's no idea that there's a party. Since there are no, there's no, as it were, the ideas that there are no rights that are at stake other than the general public, there are no parties, there are no cross-examination, there are of witnesses, there are no motions that can be made by opponents or supporters, right? As opposed to a contested case, because it does relate to the issue of uh of rights that are to be determined by the zoning commission. There, in that case, you do have parties who have uh the rights uh to make motions, to provide um also if I testimony, testimony is allowed in a rulemaking, but it is restricted because it's, it's uh allowed for uh three minutes individuals, five minutes for uh uh organizations or entities, but it is restricted because it's supposed to be, again, for the public at large, as opposed to an adjudicative or contested case where the issue is really, let's focus on the individuals who are specifically impacted. So the only folks who can participate as a party are those who are defined as person, persons who have clearly demonstrated that their interests would likely be more significantly distinctly or uni- or uniquely affected in character or in kind by the proposed zoning action, as opposed to what would happen to the public at large. So there's a distinction in the contested case to be a party. So you have to have something, has to have a different impact to you than the public at large. The example would be, you're the neighbor across the street, they want to go and raise, the, the application asks to change, you know, to add an extra story. You're clearly going to have an impact on your light and air vis a vis that street, uh vis a vis the house across the street, as opposed to somebody who lives fifty blocks away and really is the general public at large, right? So the, again, there's that distinction. The rulemaking applies to the public at large. The contested case instead focuses on the specific impacts to the individual who is asking for the relief and the zoning relief and those, the neighbors uh who are going to be specifically impacted. So you have no parties for rulemaking, parties for contested cases. Rulemaking, however, because you are changing the rules, there is an additional requirement for um public comment. So on the one hand, rulemaking, you have a limited amount of testimony, three or five minutes, as I said, for individuals. But after, the commission cannot just adopt it on one vote, they have to take two votes. They first have to adopt it, a proposed action. And then that proposed action must be published in its entirety. And then there is a thirty-day comment period for anybody to comment on that. So as it were, there are two bites at the apple for uh folks who are support or uh who object to it. You can testify at the hearing and then also in writing. And then only after that end of that thirty-day written comment period, then can the commission at that point take final action to approve or deny, as it were. On the other hand, for the contested case, it's a one-vote case. So it'll be a situation where there'll be decision to, it's, it's a, to be fair, it's a slight action, let me just correct myself. It is a, it can be a two-vote case if it goes to N C P C, the National Capitol Park uh Planning Commission, which has the right to review it. Uh, but that really doesn't really affect the fundamentals here. There, there's going to be basically ideas that there's an order and it's approved and, and, and that's it. There is no right to a comment period on a uh contested case in writing as there is for a rulemaking. So those are the sort of the two distinctions. The final distinction is that a rulemaking is appealed to Superior Court, whereas an appeal of a contested case goes to the Court of Appeals. And so those are just two different vectors for an appeal. Um, I think that is probably where I would leave it. I, I hope I have um made it as clear as I can. I, I, I can imagine folks saying that it's about as clear as mud, the bottom of the river. But it's, it, it is a difficult area, but I, I, I would again, uh, you know, just cite to uh one of the issues here, which is again, the regulation in subtitle Z of the zoning regulations two oh one point nine, which states that notwithstanding the classification of cases as rulemaking or contested cases, the commission may on its own motion or at the request of the applicant, petitioner or affected ANC determine the designation of such case as either a contested case or a rulemaking case based on the, the two standards that I've discussed, right? So I think that, and that was precisely the reference or the provision that the Court of Appeals in upholding uh zoning commission's determination that that zoning of its, rezoning of a single property was properly legislative and therefore rulemaking uh case. So I will uh stop right there and open to questions.
Um, let's see. I'm gonna go in order. Uh, Ed Hanlon, Jeff Gordon, Commissioner Goslin and Commissioner Sherman.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, I don't seem to be able to activate my video. I keep to, I keep trying to. Oh, good. Thank you. Uh, well, let me make a few quick points to you. Let's talk, let's talk first, not about generality, but about what the regulation actually says. Let's not talk about what, what we learned in law school about um standing. Let's talk about the regulation. Uh, eleven D C M R subtitle Z. The zoning regulations, two oh one point two E says the following. Contender for prop, multiple properties that are contiguous, one or more multiple properties that are contiguous are only separated by a street or an alley. All right. So what we have here with respect to the Chevy Chase Civic Site is we have the property owner, the city, coming in and moving for a map amendment of the property. And under that regulation, that should be done as a contested hearing. Now, Sarah Baden, as I think many of you know, submitted a letter uh in the, in the um record of this case, where she said in that letter, in response to a complaint that was filed, that, that this case meets all the criteria for a contested case under the two oh one E. Now, she also tried to say it meant all the criteria for a rulemaking case too. But she admitted it meant all the criteria for a contested case. So if you got, if all of you ask for a contested case, it meets the criteria for that. Now, let's talk about uh what a contested case means here. A contested case means the right to be a party to the case, the right to present either yourself or with your attorney oral and documentary evidence for the case, the right to submit rebuttal evidence, the right to cross-examine the government's witnesses, the right to cross-examine the Office of Planning in order to quote, as may be required for a full and true disclosure of the facts. Further, if you are, have a contested case, then you're entitled to a decision in writing. You're entitled to the findings of fact and the conclusions of law in writing. Uh, in a rulemaking case, all that has to happen, you don't know exactly what findings of fact they made. You don't know what conclusions of law they drew. And most importantly, in a rulemaking case, you have absolutely no right to appeal. Yes, you can file, no right to appeal to the Court of Appeals. In a rulemaking, in a contested case, any person suffering a legal wrong or adversely affected or aggrieved by a decision in a contested case by the zoning commission is entitled to judicial review in the district from your Court of Appeals. So, again, the right to call witnesses, the right to cross-examine witnesses, the right to submit rebuttal evidence, the right to, think about, you have the right to call in a contested case, the right to put scientific evidence, the right to call architects, the right to call all planners, if you show, if you decide to do so. In a rulemaking case, you have none of that. Now, why shouldn't the people in Chevy Chase have the right to call witnesses? Why shouldn't the people in Chevy Chase have the right to appeal any adverse decision as a matter of right to the Court of Appeals and ask for review of the zoning commission decision? Let me say quickly, um, I, I, I appreciate uh Max Tandro's uh courage really has nothing to do with this case. And PAL, the, the storage, I'm doing this mostly for memory, uh, that was not the city who came in and filed the map amendment. It was the ANC who filed a map amendment for property it did not own. That's not this case. This case is about the owner of the property coming in and filing the map amendment. So the PAL case, in the PAL case, the appellate had no regulatory basis for a contested hearing. There was a law. If you read the decision carefully, you won't find any reference in the PAL decision to any part of the zoning regs in support of their request. Here, you have explicit in two oh one E, explicit recognition of your right when an owner asks to map to uh files for a map amendment of its own property. Now, if I may for a moment, um.
Mr. Hanlon, can you?
Give me one moment more.
We got a few other people ahead of you. We can always come back for another one.
Yes, I, yes, I. Yeah, I, I appreciate that, but I wanted to draw the clear distinction between roommate and rights and contested rights. And the right to take an appeal if you're not happy with the result. Tell me what's different about Chevy Chase than sixteen seventeen U Street. In sixteen seventeen U Street, which I believe Mr. Tandro also appeared in, um, that's the civic site here in U Street that has a fire station and a police station. It was done as a contested hearing. And I don't think anyone from the AG's office disputed that should be done as a contested hearing. But also let's look at the Rhode Island Avenue case, where in the upzoning of the civic site in which they want to ozone the fire station and EMS. Again, that was done as a contested hearing with no objection, as I understand it, from the AG's office. But what is different about the Chevy Chase Civic Site that wasn't different about Rhode Island Avenue, northeast side, that wasn't different than the sixteen seventeen U Street Northwest Civic Site? You know, they all should be done as contested hearings in the two oh one E. So I will, I will, I will go ahead and stop with that for now. I appreciate Ms. Gore, you allowing me to speak as long as you do.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gordon.
Chairman Gore is, says a question, is it helpful for me to respond individually or would you prefer that I respond at the end? No, no, you're fine. I, I do whatever is easiest. Um, so uh, and, and, and thank you, uh, Mr. Hanlon. I appreciate, uh, that was something I had glossed over. Uh, so I appreciate you calling into uh into the issue, the specific uh aspect of two oh one point two E of subtitle Z of the zoning regulations, which does, as uh Mr. Hanlon said, state that contested cases Upset title Z of the zoning regulations, which does, as uh Mr. Hanlon said, state that contested cases include. That's an important word that they include. Map amendments filed by the property owner owners for a single property or for multiple properties that are contiguous or only separated by a street or alley. That is absolutely correct. It is also correct, however, that subtitle Z. Same section dealing with rulemaking versus contested case. Two oh one point seven, talking about rulemaking. Says that map amendments and rulemaking cases may be initiated by A. Public agencies to amend the zoning map for a neighborhood, commercial district or other geographic area encompassing multiple properties. So the, again, as I was saying, I think this is an area where there are clear distinctions at the edges. But when it gets into the middle, there is a gray zone and reasonable people can disagree. Um, I, but I I do want to make it clear. I don't believe that it is. Uh, crystal clear. I think inevitably there are times where public policy determinations can shade into having deep impacts on individual. Uh, property owners' rights, which would be uh deemed otherwise as sort of a contested case. Uh, and trying to distinguish that where the clear line that is clearly left up to the zoning commission to make the determination. In terms of Mr. Hanlon's uh discussion of the Powell storage. I do agree, there is a distinction that one could be drawn. You're absolutely right. I apologize if I made it. Seem to be different. In that case, it was a private property owner who was actually the appellant who challenged. Uh, the A and C who had wanted to downzone the property. Uh, in order to stop the property owners in uh attempt to plant, uh, to put a storage unit. Um, on on the site. Uh, and but the fact, what what I was looking at was the fact that the um Court of Appeals. Determine that the commission in that case had followed the rules and even though it applied to specific property, one single property. Nonetheless, um, it was something that was still about a public policy issue. Again, the, you know, at some point, if there's going to be litigation on this, as there probably is, it'll be determined by the Court of Appeals and Superior Court. I'm here just trying to provide sort of the basic background to to what we have. I I and I will point out that. Again, remember, it's not that there's no appeal rights for rulemakings. Those appeals go to Superior Court. And eventually potentially to um to the Court of Appeals uh after Superior Court makes its ruling. Uh, there's a distinction of which one, under home rule. Contested cases were allocated or assigned to the Court of Appeals. And su- and Superior Court instead received the uh ability or the responsibility of adjudicating appeals of rulemaking cases. So I'll I'll stop right there. Mr. Gordon, sorry.
Is it my, is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay, I want to thank Lisa and Bruce for having this, having this meeting. Uh, I have one question, but I did want to make a couple, a couple statements. Because I have the mic and I can. One, I grew up in Detroit. And Washington Boulevard in Detroit, Michigan was destroyed because the city wanted to put in art installation in. And it drove out so many small businesses that were very vibrant before that. So I'm very uh. Uh, aware and very uh want to help the businesses maintain their presence on Connecticut Avenue. So my question was. Uh, for Maximilian, you mentioned it was the resident whose son, who's built, whose house, who's the, the uh. He would not be able to see the sun because the building was too tall. And there was the resident who was five blocks away who had been affected. And one of them was contested and one of them was ruled and I, and I wasn't sure which one was which. So if you could clarify that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, uh, and and thank you. Um, so the the idea is that with the contested case, the sort of. That that um it is about, usually it is a a narrower geographic location, so oftentimes a single property. Uh, it is therefore because it's, because it's a smaller focus, it is something that has uh that is more of local uh impact. And therefore parties are allowed, they're going to be impacted. Parties have to be, and this is in order to be a party at a. Contested case hearing. Not everyone gets to be a party. You have to prove that you are impacted differently than any others. It's easy, generally, one way of looking at it is folks who fall within two hundred feet. Of who reside within two hundred feet of the property, that's generally seen as sort of the demarcation. It's a rough basis. Um, again, if you live across the city, how are, you have a harder time to prove. That whatever action you are seeking to intervene on is going to affect you differently than anybody else of the general public. You could make the argument, you make the commute every day, you you stop at the bus station right in front. Uh, I, you work right across the street. You can make the argument, but you have, but the point is you have to make that argument to be a. To get party status and therefore to be able to intervene and have these right. And was talking about uh the the rights to present testimony, the rights to uh cross examine witnesses, to to file motions and so forth. In a contested case.
Thank you.
Commissioner Goslin?
Yeah, uh, Max, I have two questions. The issue before us tonight is. The A and C should support the proposition that this be a contested case. Uh, the zoning commission is widely thought to be taking the its final decision on Thursday. Does anything happen if we do not speak before Thursday? Do we lose as an A and C any rights? Uh, I assume that the situation that we're going to face. As a practical matter is that the zoning commission is going to act. And then um the the lawsuit that Chevy Chase Boys had um filed and I think the court dismissed, but without. Prejudice so that it can come back and file again. Once the zoning commission has acted. Um, w- we would be deciding, should we decide that we want to support the claim that this should be treated as a contested case? We would be deciding it, we would decide it then. If we don't decide it before Thursday, do we as an A and C? Lose any rights? And just an addendum to that, um, you just spoke about how in general in. In contested cases, there's a sort of two hundred foot marker for uh. You being eligible to be a protestant in the case. Do A and Cs have the right to be protestants in contested cases?
Yes, uh, uh, thank you, Peter. Yes, uh, A and Cs, if you're affected, if the A and C covers the property at large, they are automatically parties. So automatically A and Cs, A and Cs are special in that, in that road. Um, in terms of the the larger question, um. I I'm I'm not sure that I can give a clear answer to that portion because I'm not sure, um. I'm I'm trying to think through the, through the ramifications. The. The zoning commission presumably is, they're scheduled to take final action. Uh, presumably they will, they may not. Um, the A and C can file something with the commission. Um, certainly to the extent that the A and C wants to um influence the commission's decision. It is better to sit and say, you know, that we we want to weigh in on this issue of of contested case versus. Rulemaking before the commission makes a final decision, right? I think that's pretty clear. Um, I will point out that at this point. If the commission were to rule to change that it its decision to, that it was a rulemaking and say that instead it's a contested case. Then they have to effectively go back and start the whole process all over because they're going to. Add a different uh type of notice, in particular, those two hundred foot uh uh butters, the folks, the property owners who are in the two hundred feet of the properties that are proposed to be rezoned. And then there are also different procedures for the entire hearing. So. It it, I I don't want to say it's it's too late in the game, the commission still has the ability to change, but if it does make a change, it would basically start the whole. Public hearing process over again from scratch. Um, I don't know if that answers your question, Peter. I'm happy to have a follow up.
The the, just so I understand, you're saying it is better to speak before the Thursday hearing if that's when final action is taken than to speak afterwards?
Certainly, in, if you want to influence the zoning commission, if the audience, intended audience is the zoning commission. Um, and I would imagine it's also probably, but that's a, that is a sort of strategic choice that I wouldn't weigh in on. You know, for the Superior Court or whatever, if the A and C, that it would be better to be doing, to be making that case earlier rather than later. Especially given the uh ramifications of making that change from uh rulemaking to a contested case.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sherman?
Max, um, thank you for all of your uh information and clarification. I appreciate it. Um, how do we understand the circumstances of the business owners whom we've heard from tonight with regard to? Their um positions as affected parties, given that they are on the avenue?
It is a, um. I I it it. It is a serious issue. Um, I certainly personally take it as as a serious issue. I believe, you know, AG in general takes that as a serious issue, the fact that folks are going to be impacted. And how they're going to be impacted. And we've heard the testimony tonight as to what that impact could be and how serious it can be. Um, I think the um. Uh, as I said, the, you know, the, the, one of the problems here is that the legal framework for determining rulemaking versus contested case is in itself sort of a bit rough. And one ends up in bucket one or bucket two. Um, and that there are reasons for being in a rulemaking because it is that public policy, but that obviously. Just because there are public policy determinations that mean that it's going to impact a large number of people. Does not mean that there are not some people are going to be impacted worse than others. Uh, and vice versa, where you have a situation where you may have a specific property that is. Where it is ruled to be a contested case because it's going to clearly impact individuals. There may also be public policy impacts that could be just used to justify it as a legislative case. So. Where i- i- it's a sort of a, there's this rough categorization that is the system that we have that we use. Um. The, I would, I guess I would say that the defense that exists, that is intended to exist in a rulemaking uh process is that it is. That there is that sort of belt and suspenders, the two bites of the apple, the ability to testify. And either submit written testimony and or oral testimony. Uh, as part of the hearing process before the commission takes proposed action, and then again to submit written uh comments. Um, at this point, unfortunately, both of those uh periods are 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 closed. Uh, unless the commission were to want to reopen um their their uh public comment period.
Right, well, thank you. I was asking primarily as a basis for. Looking at this as a contested case precisely because of the affected parties being these business owners. Whereas someone who lives a mile away, uh, someone in my circumstance, for example, would not be a directly affected party. Um, any, any rate, I appreciate that. We. Thank you.
No, I I I hear you and and I tried to address that, Bruce. I mean, I I I think that is a serious issue. I understand it. I I think again, it's this issue where you're balancing out those those two equities of the public. Process at large, the public interest, and on the other hand, the individuals uh who have, who who bear other burdens.
Great.
Specifically impacts.
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Grunwall?
Yes, hi, um, Mr. Tandrow, this question is for you. I wanted to clarify something that I found confusing. As I understand, as you explained, that rulemaking um means that. The more people who are affected, the fewer rights that people have and the less input they have. It seems to me it should be just the opposite. You use the example of um uh one or two homes losing their air and light. By the prospect of having a large building built next to them. And so that would be considered uh. Contested. And they had the right to to argue and have input and have their rights protected. But then you, I believe you said that if uh the building affected a larger number of people. Uh, those people would not have the same rights. And it seems to me, if that's the case. That's, that's asked backwards. It seems to me the more people who are threatened, that whose businesses are threatened. Um, the more they should have the right to uh have input onto whether this i- into a decision. And the more they should have rights to appeal. Thank you.
Sure, I I think this, this is, so I I think. You, the the issue again is this issue of where do we define the public legislative, the public policy legislative. Uh, side and where is it about the adjudicative side? Those are not. Easy distinctions to make. Uh, but at some point, the zoning commission has to choose one or the other because there are different processes. Again, I would say. It is not, in both cases, there is an opportunity for people to participate and to file testimony. If the difference is that in a rulemaking, one can file, one can file as many written comments as long as they are before the hearing. And similarly, as part of the written comment period after the notice of proposed rulemaking. In addition, the only limit they have is is the oral testimony is limited to to three minutes, but there's plenty of opportunity. For individuals who are impacted to give their testimony in a rulemaking. A contested case, instead, they have the opportunity, the additional opportunity, if they prove that they are parties, which is a big if. So it's not just anybody. You have to prove that they're parties. If they have a party, they they get party status, they prove it, then they have a additional. Uh, ability to present testimony and and so forth. Again. In both rulemaking and contested cases, there's still an appeal. It's not a situation where one is appealable and the other one isn't. There, there are appeals in both. The only distinction. Is that one, the rulemaking goes to Superior Court as opposed to the contested case, which goes to the Court of Appeals. And that is simply something that was laid out under the Home Rule Act that established that divvied up uh those responsibilities amongst the courts. So I just want to be clear that there is an appeal. Possibility of both, and there is the opportunity to be heard in both cases.
Commissioner Nagy?
Thank you very much for the clarification. I guess um I have a few points to make. Um. Quite apart from the question of appeal, uh, in this case, there are people living within two hundred feet. Of some of the area that's going to be upzoned and they. Um, can reasonably argue that they should have uh been parties. Um, in a contested case and have been deprived of that opportunity. So when you say that the zoning commission gets a choice, they've basically, the zoning commission has ignored. The people who live within two hundred, uh, the individuals who live within two hundred feet. Um, and we haven't even gotten to the question of the business owners who are affected. Here, who are also individuals in some cases. Um, it is troubling to me that Chevy Chase is being treated differently from other areas of the city. I don't understand. Um, well, I, the rationale. Uh, that would make a difference between here and Seventeenth and U or here in Rhode Island Avenue. And um. It seems arbitrary to me and slightly capricious of the zoning commission, and I use those words on purpose. Um, to have decided to do this, if you think that it's sort of up to the zoning commission and you cite cases to that effect. It seems to me arbitrary and capricious to decide for here that it should be rulemaking at Chevy Chase. But not rulemaking at Seventeenth and U or Rhode Island Avenue. Um, and I would like for the zoning commission to have to explain. Um, that disparity and the disparate treatment of Chevy Chase. Um, business owners are clearly being impacted. They've not had an opportunity to be heard. And um it's difficult for me to see the harm in opening up the debate. To the community in a contested hearing when there's so much at stake for the people who live in this community. And they haven't had an opportunity to be heard. Um, despite the fact that there has been some rulemaking, um, again, they haven't, they haven't had the opportunity to be parties in a contested case. Um, it seems to me more input is better in a democratic society, and so. It would be great to have the zoning commission decide to do this as a contested. Hearing and uh the fact is that the whole upzoning corridor is one action because they didn't separate out. The two parcels, the the two parts of it, the community, some of the property and the rest of the property. And so. A contested hearing would seem to be appropriate for the entire um zoning endeavor. That's pretty much what I have for right now. I I'm not actually looking for a response from Mr. Tando. I'm just laying out what I see. As the problems with how this has been done and the fact that I think that there's a lot of benefit. there's a lot of benefit to be gained from having the community, have it be open, having it be open to the community in the way that it was in two other situations that are indistinguishable other than the fact that it's Chevy Chase. All I got for right now.
Thanks, Commissioner Nagy. And before I let Mr. Hanlon go on round two, let me ask one quick question. Max, you talked about party status and you, you said if party status is achieved, can you give a little background about party status in this particular instance and what the hurdle would be for a community to get party status? In a contested case?
Sure. I mean, I, I think the, it is ultimately, again, will be the determination made by the commission or the board, depending on, you know, which entity it is that making the determination of the case. But in either case, it, it, and so therefore as a result, it, it can change depending on the circumstance. It would inevitably be, be fact based. So for example, or based on the specifics. So if, let's say it is a situation where somebody wants to build in front, they have a, a front yard setback, they're required to build back 25 feet from the street. They want to extend it, they want to reduce that to 20 feet. Well, the neighbor in the rear may be within 200 feet, but it's going to be a hard slog for them to prove that they're going to be impacted by this decision that's going to be on the opposite side of the property that they're at, that they're not going to really see. Other thing, they have to walk all the way around the block in order to go and find it, as opposed to the neighbor across the street who isn't, doesn't, their properties don't directly, they're not contiguous. They're separated by the street, but nonetheless, because it's going to be that front yard setback, the neighbor across the street is clearly going to be impacted differently than the public at large. So that, that is, I don't know if that, if that helps, but it really is that it's a, but it is a fact based situation. The 200-foot rule is a general guideline. The board and the commission have not always followed that. And again, I mean, one extreme example would be somebody who lives across the, the district, but who works right adjacent to it, to the property that's going to be changed, or who for some reason has some other connection that, and if they can prove to the commission or the board, then that they would be desperately impacted somehow more significantly, differently than anybody, than the general public, then, then the board or the commission could give them party status. But again, as in the situation of determining whether the proceedings should, whether the case should follow a rulemaking or contested cases, proceedings and procedures, the choice as to whether or not an individual or an entity would get party status in a contested case also is up to the board or the zoning commission, depending on, on which entity is, is, is deciding the case.
Got it. Okay. So let me go back to Mr. Hanlon and then Lee Mayor. And it's about 8:50, so I would like after these two community members, we don't have any others to introduce the resolution and to start working on a motion. Mr. Hanlon?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Gore. I want to make several quick points. There is one thing I do agree with Max Tandro on. If you want to have any impact, you need to pass the resolution before the meeting on Thursday, not after. Passing the resolution, passing the resolution after Thursday is a waste of time. Think about it for a moment. This, at the moment, this is a rulemaking case. I can find nothing in the regulations that allows anyone to reopen a case or ask for reconsideration of a rulemaking case. Remember, there are no parties to the case. There are no motions in a rulemaking situation. There's no motion to reopen in rulemaking. There's no motion for reconsideration. When that hammer goes down on Thursday, the cases, the case, the matter is over. So if you want to have an impact, you have to have an impact before they make that final decision. And I think that's important. Second, let, let impact for a moment. There is, as Mr. Tandro did point out, there is no 200-foot rule. We think in our minds all the time that if somebody lies within 200 feet of the property, then they have automatic standing. And we generally, the zoning commission generally gives people with 200 feet automatic standing. That can be people on the other side of the street. It can be people with adjoining or abutting properties. But let's talk about, what does, what does it really mean standing? It means that your particular interests are more adversely affected than those of the general public. Right? So a business owner across the street, or a business owner down the block, or business owner even two blocks away, 500 feet away, could in fact have standing if he can demonstrate, or she can demonstrate that her interest in that business in a way that, that, that the general public is not. Think about some of the adverse impacts. There's the adverse impact from traffic, adverse impact from smog, from pollution, from noise, from violation of the view share. Think about organizational interest that can be adversely impacted, impacted in the standing. An organization, as part of its core organizational principles, may be the protection of open space and parkland. That, that particular organization would have standing to contest. Organizational interest in open land and parks in this neighborhood or more specifically with this site would have standing because those interests are more individually impacted than the general public. So we, we shouldn't just get in our head that it's 200 feet. There's a lot of interests that can be adversely affected for individually, for other way. Let me say also with this idea of appeal for a moment. There is only, only contested cases have a right to an appeal. So let's not get mistaken about that. The, the law, the code gives any person aggrieved by a final decision in a contested case, the right to appeal. Not, it's not, it's an appeal as a matter of right, not an appeal by discretion. It's not a case of you appeal and the Court of Appeals can say, yes, I'll take it or no, I won't. You have the right to have that case heard in the Court of Appeals. Now, Mr. Tandro was right that you can also sue in the district court, but what in the district, in Superior Court, but what you're suing in Superior Court, you're saying, I was denied the right to a contested hearing in the first place. Right? And my due process rights, so my equal protection rights were so violated. But in that instance, you may not be contesting the underlying decision. In the Court of Appeals, you're, you're contesting that underlying decision. Is this decision right? Is this decision wrong? Was this decision made properly made by the zoning commission? And so your rights are much different. And don't, don't get confused by calling them both appeals because they're not both appeals. Not, not in the wording of the statute, nor in the home rule, they're called, both called appeals. So I wanted to make those points. I don't know if anyone had any question. If not, I know you have a lot of people who want to speak, and so I don't want to. I thank you, Lisa, Ms. Gore, again, for allowing me to finish my thoughts.
Mayor?
Yes, I, I guess Mr. Hanlon may have answered my question. But my question is, is there a difference between the two courts that, the Courts of Appeal that would listen to an appeal? Mr. Tandro? And your opinion?
So, I mean, I think first I, I would point out that if the assertion is whether or not the decision was properly made as, I can, by the commission as a contested case or not, the PAL versus the PAL self-storage was itself a case that had been deemed a rulemaking and notwithstanding that the, the appellate in that case went to the Court of Appeals and asked and said this was incorrectly categorized. And the Court of Appeals determined that it was not, that it was accurate. So even in that case, as opposed to, you know, there's always the opportunity to appeal to the Court of Appeals under the assertion that it is not, that it was not correctly classified by the zoning commission. But separately, there is then the determination or the ability to seek redress to the Superior Court on the basis of a rulemaking. Obviously, there are distinctions in terms of the standard of review as, as well. But, but, but there is an ability to seek redress under both processes.
And Commissioner Nagy.
Yeah, thank you. I was just gonna say that I, I don't, I just fail to see the harm in the zoning commission handling this as a contested case because it expands the abilities of people to be heard. Even if, and that's a big even because I'm not completely sure about this, even if it's true that it's discretionary with the zoning commission, it seems to me that it would be prudent and expansive of the zoning commission to make this as large a basket as possible so that the community can have as much input as possible. They have the discretion. I think they should use it.
So with that, Commissioner Nagy, would you go over your resolution and move it, move it into the body?
Well, I do have a question about that because I'm new at this, but I'm not in, pardon?
Want me to do it?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out how to do it. Do you want me to just talk about, am I, to just talk about what the resolution does?
Yeah, just like a one-minute high-level overview. First of all, let me start out by asking the commissioners if you all received the resolution offered by Commissioner Nate Nagy. And hopefully you also received my friendly amendments to that. Okay. So Commissioner Nagy, just for, so the commissioners have read it and probably understand it very thoroughly, but maybe a high one level, one-minute overview for the general public that have not seen the resolution. And then what I'll do is come behind you and talk about my friendly amendments.
Okay, thank you. The resolution in very high level and pretty brief just calls for the zoning commission to hear this case as a, hear this matter, not this case because it would be a new case, as a contested hearing. I believe that it was set down improperly. And that is the basis for my submitting this resolution, that it should not have been a rulemaking case. It should have been a contested case. There are parties who have an interest in this matter who've been excluded from having their views fully taken into account and have, their rights to appeal have been affected by that. It's, but also, and very importantly, the ANC's ability to weigh in on this situation has also been affected by the fact that the zoning commission has not conducted this as a contested hearing. And the ANC is, as Mr. Tandro said, automatically a party in such a case. So by not setting this down as a contested hearing, the ANC has been deprived of its ability and responsibility to put forward the views of the community, not as a whole, and, and to have a discussion about all the community's views. So.
So you can end with, you move your resolution. So just say, I moved.
I would like to move my resolution forward, please.
Second. Okay. So now we're in a discussion phase, commissioners. And I just want to start out initially under my friendly amendments. And I know other commissioners have amendments in this, so we're in a discussion phase. A couple of friendly amendments that I proposed to the resolution, and I've given the, the matter a lot of consideration. I've looked at the zoning case record. I've looked at the Chevy Chase voice petitions and the court seats they have. I was, I am really grateful. Let me just start by saying, for Office of Attorney General appearing tonight, your comments really helped me solidify my decision. But one of the things that, and I'll just start out by saying, a couple of things struck me. And one of the things that was really striking to me is that the Director of Office of Zoning basically said that this case does meet the criteria of a contested case. So I'm definitely looking at the standards and that's kind of what I was looking for in the OAG discussion. And it's actually kind of already laid out in what the Office of Zoning has opined. And they have opined that this case has met the standard of not only a contested case, but a rulemaking case. So one of my friendly amendments is to capture that. So I, I discussed that Sarah Barden, in her official capacity as Director of Office of Zoning, acknowledged that this is a zoning case that meets the criteria for a contested case as outlined in Z201.2E. And it qualifies as rulemaking, thus making it ambiguous. I also talked about another wherewithal clause about the development project in Ward One, which is the U Street project. And their neighbors situated or similarly situated property owners, residents and organizations in that zoning case. And that was a case that was initially rulemaking and then the zoning commission changed its decision and made it a contested case. I did, I was not aware at the time, and I'm glad OAG brought this up, the Rhode Island Avenue Northeast case, because I was not aware of that case. So there's precedent in the city for at least two projects that have been handled as contested cases. So I think it's very important to add those two, or it's actually four, the way I broke it out, it's four clauses that really kind of point to the fact that zoning commission said we meet the criteria for a contested case, and then we have other precedent in the city to add to the argument. I made some minor edits. Commissioner Nagy, I don't know if you had a chance to, to look at those, but I would ask that you accept those friendly amendments that I offered to strengthen the resolution.
I do.
Okay. Commissioner Sherman. You're on mute.
Thank you. Yes, I want to speak to the resolution, specifically the parts that concern the role of the ANC. Commissioner Goslin and I did provide limited testimony as allowed under the rules of a rulemaking hearing to the zoning commission in, in April or in May. And it was clear to me then, and it's even clearer to me now, that the ANC has not had the opportunity to convey to the zoning commission the full range of views in Chevy Chase that we have understood as commissioners in talking with our constituents, that we have understood by way of our 2023 Community Center Library survey, which 2,300 members of our community took and provided abundant input for us. Further, I have conducted my own surveys of my constituents with respect to the proposed zoning for the avenue minus the Community Center Library and have taken those views onboard. More than 400 of my constituents responded to that survey and provided copious comments. I have gleaned from those comments that our community is very open to development. Our community is open to housing, to affordable housing. They have just sought and wanted it to be within scale. And with an ability to retain the look and feel of our neighborhood writ large, but certainly along the corridor, as envisioned in the small area plan. And the inability of our ANC to fully represent those views to the zoning commission because of the type of hearing and the process that they have followed has handicapped our commission in our representation of our constituents. So I, I want to speak to that part of the resolution, commend that part of the resolution, and say that it would be highly advantageous for us to be able to have the opportunity to have a much more fulsome role in a process in which we could relate. to have a much more fulsome role in a process in which we could relate uh, what we understand. It's not perfect understanding. We can't profess to know what all fifteen thousand or so of our residents think about this. We only know what those who have voluntarily offered their views on surveys and talking to us, writing to us and so forth. But that is a substantial body of information that we could share in full. And I would finally say that also includes many, many constituents whom we very rarely hear from. We very rarely hear from families with with children in our neighborhood. Eight hundred and five families with children under eighteen at home took our Community Center Library Survey and provided a a wealth of information for us to share. So I speak in support of it in that regard specifically. Um, and I appreciate Commissioner Gore, your friendly amendments.
Thank you. Commissioner Goslin? You're on mute.
Thank you. Um, uh, Commissioner Nagy, um, I I let me first say, I I will reluctantly support this. My reluctance doesn't come from um, the substance. I think you've made a good case. We should uh, uh, support the idea of this being a contested case. Um, it comes from the 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 process here that we've done this with twenty-four hours notice. Um, I I'm, I just, at the same time, uh, make these remarks, get this up on the website with people in the chat or saying they can't even see the draft resolution. I'd ask that um, uh, whereas is uh, four, five and six, let's see, this is, uh, I'm looking here at at um, Lisa's uh, uh, four, five and six be struck. Um, if you are willing to agree to that, um, I and I accept uh, Chair Gore's uh, friendly amendments, I'm prepared to support this.
Commissioner Nagy, you're on mute.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry. It's, ooh, what an echo, sorry about that. Commissioner Goslin, can can you call out the specific whereas paragraphs that you're talking about?
Commissioner Nagy, you have, you must have a phone or something on, you're gonna have to mute.
I think that's Edward, who needs to be muted.
We.
Okay.
Okay, we said? Okay, um, Commissioner Nagy, um, it it whereas four reads the truncated role of the ANC contribute to a largely dichotomized testimony before the the zoning commission, what goes on.
Can we, can we do, take these one at a time?
Sure, um, yeah, I look, general, um, Liz, my argument is that we did, um, both Bruce and I testified, we also have, this commission has twice proposed um, uh, um, attempts at compromises. Bruce and I uh, authored uh, uh, an attempt at a compromise. Um, and so I do think that, and I did, as as a general form, um, when you leave the commission, you're not going to want your successors um, um, uh, dissing your um, your work. So I would, I just, uh, um, the uh, the um, the 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 whereas that says the truncated role um, contributed to a largely dichotomized testimony. And um, and uh, well, I'm a little confused about the next one because I'm reading both um, edits to it.
Commissioner Goslin, let me, my read on, and I I could be wrong. But my read on bullet four, my interpretation is that because of the type of case that was set down, the ANC didn't have a full ability to offer its opinion and its role. So I don't look at line four as a negative. I look at line four as saying that because of the type of case the ANC's role is limited to give testimony. And maybe we could word it a little different, but that's how I'm interpreting interpreting it. And based on that interpretation, we, you know, kind of going back to what Commissioner Sherman said, we were not able to give the full voice of what was said in the community.
Fair enough. And so I would ask then that, um, uh, we say because the the case was handled as a rulemaking, uh, the ANC's contribution um, resulted in a dichotomized testimony. Um, I I, it's hard for me, the dichotomized does suggest it was the people saying it and not something about the rulemaking. But but I'm I'm happy to take that interpretation if we just embody it in the whereas. And um, and then I I guess it's really six that I I'd like to see the the same um, the same language, which is because of the handling of the of the uh, cases of of the of the issue as a uh, as a rulemaking. Um, uh, there was an inherent balance of uh, I I actually don't, I don't understand actually what six, whereas six refers to. But it it, um, actually, let's, you, Chair Gore suggested handling this one at a time. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to take her interpretation and I'd just like to see it embodied in whereas four. Um, is that acceptable to you?
It is, and it was not intended to, Mike, and no part of this resolution was intended to diss the previous.
And then what it just.
Just for the record, this this, you know, I'm new to this, we're going forward as far as I'm concerned, I'm not looking back at the last commission.
What what does six, you're whereas six refer to?
I I didn't number them, so I'm counting with you, but is that remarks on the record by the CZ Chair? The whereas that you're talking about? Rulemaking process, limited interaction between the ANC?
One above that.
I thought we already dealt with the truncated role, no?
Uh, it's a separate one with.
Uh, I see two truncated roles, sorry. Yep, got it. Yeah, sorry, I, my page was up, not down, so.
Uh, I did just, I I'd be, I'm curious what it refers to. So let me read it to you if you're not seeing it.
Oh, I see it. The the people who don't live in Chevy Chase versus the people who do, yes? I, because it didn't give, because uh, because it was set down as rulemaking and didn't give people who have an interest who live.
I see, I see. All right, fine.
Close to the area that's in contention.
Okay.
Okay, I I, this may speak to the policy versus non-policy issues. The people who are directly affected didn't have the opportunity that they should have had.
Okay, so if we could, if we could just add the same language, because of this case was handled, because this matter was handled as a rulemaking. Um, uh, the, it, it truncated the ANC's role, ability to, uh, you know, provide balanced, uh,
Yeah. I'd be, I'd be amenable to that.
Uh, before I, you have the floor, um, this, uh, uh, it it it's hard to describe the the last twenty-four hours trying to get this meeting together. I think it's, and I just think we cannot, going forward, we cannot have big issues like this um, jammed at the last minute. I mean, I I have great sympathy for the many people who feel this is a bad decision. Who 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 have had almost no notice, and I still haven't got the damn thing up on the on the website. Um, so they're 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 listening to all this with no and I just think that, uh, that terrible precedent.
Dr. Wall?
Yes, I I agree with you, Peter, but the problem is, is that the previous ANC didn't deal with this question. And now we have several new commissioners who are very concerned about this issue. And and that's why it's coming up at the very last minute, because only the new commissioners were just sworn in, um, just a couple of weeks ago. So this is our very first opportunity to weigh in. Um, the previous ANC, you had this in front of you for quite some time, and no one, no one raised the, no one made an um, a resolution concerning contested. So so that's why it's happening so quickly now. We have a deadline of tomorrow for the zoning commission, and you've got, you know, several new uh, new commissioners who just came onboard. So that that's the explanation for that, and I agree, I think this is a terrible, terrible way to handle things. And and rushing like this is is very stressful for everyone. But that's the explanation, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Carol, if this was um, something that was significant, why wasn't this discussed on January thirteenth? Why wasn't it discussed via email any time before the twenty-seventh? Especially if this, especially if you or others newly elected commissioners were very concerned about this case, why was it not brought forth before the twenty-seventh? Because I know you didn't think about it before, so I'm just curious about that.
You know, it was a very busy time for all of us. We've had so much catching up to do as new commissioners. And suddenly we realized that the the due date for the zoning commission tomorrow was looming, and that we had to act. And that's how it happened.
So it just, on January twenty-seventh at eight forty-five or eight forty, it just became looming. It just, something just became very looming at eight forty on January twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I think we all.
Even even the thought to make the resolution and discuss it, it just became looming.
Commissioners, I'm gonna get you guys back on track. The issue in the motion before our hand is this resolution. The process we can discuss in administrative meeting. Um, any other commissioner questions on the resolution? Any community comments on the resolution? Commissioner Goslin?
Point of order, did did Commissioner Nagy accept your um?
I did, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so um, let me just add my final comments to this. Um, I think we're gonna find that regardless of what commission we're on, we're gonna have issues that hit us at the twelfth hour. One of the things that I would ask the commissioners to do is uh, just make sure that we're continuing to fight the community fight. And that is going to require the commission um, to be as unified as possible. Uh, I called Commissioner Nagy about her resolution and my friendly amendments, and I told her that, you know, I am definitely concerned about advocating for the community, but I'm also really concerned about getting as close to a unanimous vote on as many issues as we can. And I know in this particular instance, you know, we might not have seven zero, but we're definitely gonna have better than four three. And that's critical for us to show as much unity around these decisions as possible. Um, there are gonna be some aspects of the civic core that we might be four three on, and that is okay. Um, but we have to do as much as we can to be as unified as possible. I, as I said in the beginning, I took this uh, matter to heart. Um, I told Commissioner Nagy too, one thing that you'll notice about me is I'm I'm a process person. Uh, I looked at the issue not from the standpoint of who was bringing it. Um, who was supporting it, but I looked at it from a standpoint of my three GO one constituents. And if we were sitting on a civic core, what they would say to me? I do not know one constituent that would say I would not want to be a party to this case. That I would want a rulemaking hearing as opposed to a contested hearing. If I go downstairs and ask my husband, what he would say, he would absolutely say contested. Um, so that's how I approach these issues, that's how I'm really, really trying to approach these issues. Um, and I told Commissioner Goslin, I'm former law law enforcement, this kind of reminded me of, you know, when I was a trial agent, you know, people want a fair trial, people want a hearing. Would you want a bench trial with the judge, or do you want a jury trial? I go with the jury trial because of the way that the process is handled. So I really did not hear anything tonight that persuaded me differently, um, that, you know, we are outside of standards, we're within the standards on this. Um, zoning commission has already said, and this is what really solidified, they already said this case qualifies for a contested case. The reason why it's a rulemaking case is because they have the authority and they have the advantage of choosing which one they want. And of course, they chose ru- rulemaking. But if we're trying to give our community as much voice as possible, we heard from our businesses, and I don't think there's anyone, and I've said this on Connecticut Avenue Bike Lane Issue, and I'm saying this tonight. I've said this multiple times, we have not advocated and communicated with our business community enough. We have not done it. One of the first things I did with Commissioner Goslin and Commissioner Simmons is said to both of them, we have got to start getting a list of our business community, doing emails to them, doing outreach to them to make sure we understand how these issues impact them. Um, so this just to me solidifies the decision that, you know, we should make this a contested case for those various reasons. We're within standards, there's precedent in the city for, if they can have it on U Street and Rhode Island Avenue, I don't know why we can't have it on Connecticut. So I'm urging the commission to vote for this resolution. I think it's the best thing to do for this community. With that, I call for the vote. Commissioners, all those in favor of um, the resolution that's proposed by Commissioner Nagy on the zoning commission to conduct a contested hearing regarding upzoning on Upper Connecticut Avenue um, as amended, um, by the friendly amendment she's accepted, please raise your hand. All those oppose? Abstentions. The vote is six zero one and the resolution passes. All right. Congratulations, Commissioner Nagy, Commissioner Sherman.
How do you vote?
So the commission, the commission votes and the commission just took the vote and the resolution passed. So it will be going forward, uh, we need to get it out tonight. So we're not finished working, commissioners. If Commissioner Nagy, if you can incorporate the friendly amendments, I'll stay up with you. It's nine thirty, I'm good until probably two in the morning. Um, we'll make sure we get this out.
We'll get it out.
Okay.
Am I, is Bruce posting, is Liz, is?
Liz doesn't know how to post yet, so someone else has to do that, sorry.
Who's putting it up?
To do all the legwork, hmm?
We'll get that. Let me go to Commissioner Sherman, he had his hand up.
Yeah, I just want to re- reflect on what our fellow commissioners had to say about the process. I also completely agree that we want to give the public as much advanced notice as possible. Um, and and at the same time, I think we we want to show agility in the face of exigent circumstances as we've seen here. I would note that we had sixty people on the call tonight. For a typical meeting, we would have sixty people or so, maybe fifty, maybe seventy. We had, it seemed to me, um, very good information provided by the Office of the Attorney General, very factual. I think it was educational for the community. We were able to get a wide range of views in, and particular to hear from, and this goes to your point, Commissioner Gore, business owners who have felt that they were not part of the process and have not been heard from. And I think that that's very important in this case, obviously, because it is the Connecticut Avenue corridor where the rezoning is taking place. So I'm um, commending the process for bringing them in and from hearing from them. And I certainly support hearing further from them on matters that affect their interests going forward. So I think at the end of the day, the commission and the community here made lemonade out of lemons on this, and we produced an outcome that will be beneficial for the community. So I thank everyone.
Let me go to Mary Ralph.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I I appreciate the vote on the ANC tonight. I wanted to ask a question. I thought it was very powerful testimony tonight from the McGruders and um, Robert Gordon and um, uh, guys at Monarch. And I'm wondering, is anybody gonna capture those comments? Because I think the zoning commission is in the tw- it's in the twelfth hour here. And unless the commission is, I think the ANC is gonna have to do more than just submit a resolution here. I I don't know whether you've talked about this already, but I think you should include some kind of statements from as many of the businesses as you can at this short, at this late hour, at least the very three that came in tonight. at least the very three that came in tonight as as supplemental information for the commission. Because I think they're gonna, they need to be persuaded that their decision, that they're ready to rubber stamp tomorrow is that, you know, it's necessary to try to alter that. And I think the only persuasive way to do that is to show some of the testimony from those businesses. And if they can pull in a few other people, that would be fabulous. But I would attach something written, maybe a transcript from this meeting highlighting those comments, something that bolsters the the ANC's vote and resolution.
Okay, I think we can do that. Commissioner Goslin?
I'm I'm happy to do that if you want to do it as a separate document. Alternatively, you could put it in, you could put the material in the resolution, the final resolution. I don't know whether, I mean, as crazy. Anyways, let me know how how you intend to handle that. Okay?
Yep, I think we could do either or. And and who is isn't you? Are you and Commissioner Sherman who's testifying on Thursday? I thought we were on, one of you guys was testifying on our behalf.
We we have asked previously, Commissioner Gore, and the word has been from the Secretary of the Commission that we would not be allowed to testify further. We asked with regard to the the hearing that took place in December. And they said, no, there's no more opportunity. We've heard from the ANC. This is exactly part of the problem. But we could further petition, given that we are sending forth a resolution to explain the resolution and then provide the the color as we've gotten it from our business owners on their concerns.
Yeah, let's try to do that.
Okay, I'll look into that tomorrow morning and then share that with the commission.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'll call the meeting adjourned. It's nine twenty seven. And thank you, everyone, for attending, particularly the community, Office of Attorney General, the business owners, Chevy Chase Main Street, and everybody that showed up to give testimony tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.